Good evening. Welcome to the June 20th, 2024 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Good evening, everyone. First up is the approval of our minutes from May 1st, 2024. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 1st, 2024. Is there in the record?
Second? It's a move of the second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up, we have a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council on a little thing we call...
What is this?
What's that?
What is this?
An ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 4, known as the City Zoning Ordinance of the City Code, CTAM 9739-2024. A lot on the record about that, so I'll turn it over to Rob Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Barham. Good evening, members of the Commission. As you mentioned, this is the recommendation of the Mayor and Council on the repeal and replacement of Chapter 24, the zoning ordinance. We began this little effort about 18 months ago, a little more than that. Took a long time. I'm very happy to be here. Joining me this evening at the table is Joe Helferdy from our consultant ZoneCo. He's going to do a brief presentation. We all know, everybody's sort of worn out and seen every slide at least seven different times at a different presentation, but we figured we really wanted to do a summation before we went to the recommendation.
And you know Commissioner Hopkins never gets enough of this.
I don't.
You can't even talk about it until the end of the year every weekend. It's fucking great.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. So we're going to talk about retool Gaithersburg yet again, the city's comprehensive effort to update the zoning code. So why retool Gaithersburg? Well, of course, cities are changing, and therefore, the zoning codes themselves need to change to stay updated and current with the current policies and trends of a city. And more importantly, a zoning code should be easy to use for both administrators and the general public alike. This project was led by a series of goals, both technical and policy oriented. So from a technical perspective, really looking to help to improve the organization and general usability of the code, using tools like visual aids, charts, tables, you know, these types of elements, and as well as use modern terminology and definitions to help not only improve the code today, but make sure that into the future, it continues to function well. From a policy perspective, this code was intended to help to enact things that have been contemplated by this body in the past, things like the comprehensive plan, things like your housing element. So supporting housing options as well as infill and adaptive reuse of existing structures and removing barriers to equity in your land use process. So as Rob mentioned, this process began in December of 2022, and that was all in anticipation of the March 2023 virtual public kickoff meeting. So at that time, staff joined with ZoneCo, we created a steering committee, which met regularly to help kind of guide the process throughout the entirety of this project, as well as creating things like public websites, dedicated email addresses and phone lines for members of the public to provide feedback or ask questions. And also, at this time, we began the zoning diagnostic report, which was shared with you all, as well as the public, and ultimately was presented in... Wrong slide. Was ultimately presented in two virtual meetings held in June. In spring and kind of summer of 2023, this effort really focused a lot on outreach. So this included not only the presentation for the diagnostic report, targeted stakeholder focus group discussions, including a wide array of participants, whether they be experts in your local land use policy, or, you know, local business owners or residents. In addition to these virtual meetings, the team also made sure to have online engagement platforms as well, so things like feedback surveys that were able to focus on key policy areas for the zoning code. Lastly, part of this outreach effort was the production of the community leaders engagement workbook, which was the outcome of an in-person meeting held with local community leaders here in Gaithersburg, and submitted to them for them to be able to engage their constituent groups on this process. So we began drafting this code in earnest in November of 2023. So this was following the October joint work session, where we went extremely in-depth into the kind of framework for how the code was going to be laid out and amended through this process. Additionally, once that process was complete, we were here before Mayor, City Council, and Planning Commission, both February and March, where we provided the detailed overview and introduction to the code, and then our March presentation, which was a follow-up on specific policy items requested by various members of those bodies. So the draft code itself was released three weeks prior to those joint work sessions, so it's been publicly available since February of... or early February of 2024. And since then, on both April 15th, there was a joint public hearing where we provided a full overview of the contents of the revised zoning code, as well as updates on any changes that had been made based on feedback from the joint work sessions. And additionally, there was the May 20th joint public hearing where the incorporation of the expiration date for SDPs was discussed. So a very, very brief overview of the zoning code. The new zoning ordinance is rearranged into 16 unique articles, and this process involved every single section and every single page of the zoning code being touched or amended in some way. You can see here, over two-thirds of the zoning code was amended in from either a technical and/or policy perspective in a very, very significant ways. The sections that weren't were largely retained, so these are including things like the affordable housing section, adequate public facilities, or enforcement. These were zoning code sections that really met the objectives and goals of the city and didn't require substantive policy updates, but they were still amended to make sure that they were organizationally consistent with the remainder of the code, cross-references were provided, and generally, the usability goals of the project were still met. From a technical perspective, so this includes a wide range of articles within the code, things like parking, things like signage or, you know, measurement. These sections were substantially overhauled largely from an organizational perspective, as well as through the inclusion of tables and graphics where it possibly could be implemented. Also, there were new methods for implementing some of these zoning concepts, such as the comprehensive use table, which we've talked about at several prior meetings, as well as the new set of definitions to support the entirety of that code. Here's just two quick examples of some of the sections that received some of the largest technical overhaul. Off-street parking, where there was, you know, substantial inclusion of things like tables and graphics, as well as structural changes to be able to talk about the new revised rates and make sure that they could be implemented with regard to the new method for establishing uses and use groups within the code. Signage additionally is a section that was really substantial effort put into ensuring that it was illustrative, as well as kind of clear and concise through its use of tables to make sure that both, you know, the standards as they exist today were clearly demonstrated, as well as any amended standards, such as the inclusion of sign types that weren't previously contemplated in your current code. And then lastly, the articles which were really focused on policy improvement. So these involved a pretty substantial change to support the city's goals of both retool, as well as your past planning efforts, and really focused on the items such as opening up housing options, supporting infill development, and removing these equity barriers. So one of the most substantive policy changes in this code would be the changes to the standard zoning districts. So in addition to their organizational and technical overhaul, such as the inclusion of the comprehensive use table, as well as tables for each individual district's zoning standards and diagrams to be associated with it, the standards for the districts were all also modified slightly to be able to better accommodate the objectives of the project. So this includes things like increase in lot coverage, height or impervious coverage where applicable, modifications of setbacks, and making sure that the zoning districts aligned with kind of what was built into the... what was previously built, right? So removing non-conformances, but also could support the types of housing that were not previously contemplated in your code, such as three and four unit developments. Similarly, in floating overlay and special zoning districts, there was a substantial technical improvement made to the code, which involved consolidating all of those various unique zoning tools into a single article. And what this did was it allowed for us to be able to simplify a lot of the procedural language, as well as improve things like findings to make sure that there was a greater equity across them, and there was more consistency in how that they would be applied across various floating zones. Two of the good examples of the policy changes made here would include the CD zone, where in an effort to try and incentivize development and promote the consolidation of lots, the teams incorporated a floor-area ratio system, which is based on lot size to try and promote development on larger sites, but also includes elements such as floor-area bonuses for incentives for different particular program elements that might meet the city's objectives, such as additional affordable housing, or providing residential units that support family size. Also, another substantial policy improvement here would be the creation of the MCD zone. So this takes the kind of success of the flexibility of floating zones within your zoning code and tweaks it to better support commercial development. So this is a zone that was created specifically for non-residential uses that would be able to support employment notes. And lastly, from a meaningful policy perspective, is the inclusion of an accessory dwelling unit policy within your zoning code. So the policy that's put forth in the code before you today is a very flexible policy that allows for an ADU to be built within any zoning district on any lot that can accommodate or meet the standards for that ADU. Also, rather than trying to limit the types of ADUs that can be built, this code provides a range of options to really depend on the unique conditions of the site, whether they be detached or attached or integral to the buildings. And in order to make sure that that was a successful program, the zoning code also puts out a series of standards and regulations to help to ensure that the size, location, height, and setbacks are all still contextually appropriate for the various residence districts, as well as make sure that they're balanced with parking. So next steps. So following tonight's Planning Commission meeting, the application will move forward to the Mayor and City Council for their final action. June 28th is when the record closes for Mayor and City Council, when they'll be taking their final action on July 15th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rob.
Yeah, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we can give you staff's recommendation. Questions?
Good question. When or if the City Council moves it July, mid-July?
August 5th.
August 5th. The implementation.
Is the effective date.
Any questions?
They posted. Posted. It's already... I mean, it's already posted for review, but you're going to post it as a reviewable doc.
Yes. So one of the things we're doing, we have the boring munich... you know, munich code version, and the technical strike and underline is in the record. We've never presented it because it's horrible to read. We're going to work with ZoneCo, so the draft, the PDF draft, we're going to maintain. They're going to provide us a copy that will be maintained over time. So Greg's on my goal is, upon adoption, fingers crossed, we're going to be posting that along with a couple charts. One of them is two items that we actually pulled out of the earlier version of draft. One is the decision matrix to help our residents understand, you know, if you have an application, who's it going to go through and what process? And then the other one is the how to use the code. So we'll have the prettier PDF version that we've been including in packets updated in those two charts.
So let me follow that, because that was a question I had. When you publish this, there still is the technical version of it that...
It will still be in munich code.
So if somebody wanders in and wants to know something, is that what they hit first or do they hit the other document first? I have to just kind of...
So the way we've discussed it right now is if somebody came in, obviously, we direct them to the city's website, and there's that dropdown for codes and regulations, it's going to be on the right side. So they're not going to have to. They're going to see a bullet for it, just as they would for the traffic regs or the environmental regs. Greg, in fact, if he wants to jump in, I know has spoken upstairs. We figured, especially in the near term, it's a big change. This is a lot better for our public. A part of our goal for retool was making it more usable. The last thing we want to do is send it to munich code to try to figure that out. It's a lot easier to have the standalone doc.
And over time, the technical version, municipal code thing, right, tracks the changes by virtue of the strike throughs and the new...
No, so they don't show that in there. It's just the structure of the way munich coded shows the entire city code. So if you didn't know what you were necessarily looking for, sometimes it can be hard to find something through munich code.
That's what I'm getting at, is whenever we do a change, or there's an amendment or a text amendment, there is a strike through in the new piece of text, right? And that's how you read it, how you find it. When you see it, you'll see what the old struck-out version is, right?
No. You see the final version on munich code.
Only?
Yeah. It's through the public hearing process that we have to do the strike, double strike, et cetera.
Perfect. So the PDF document, over time, it'll just get updated and refreshed with the new data or something like that. Will there be a need to look at rules of procedure again? Or the, you know, when you guys are doing the homework here, is there anything to go back and revisit? We didn't talk about those at all, but there are all of the different boards and commissions are there.
No, because as Joe mentioned, one of the things that sort of has stayed true is the same bodies are making the same legal determinations. I think the only change is, again, with us reducing the amount of amended SDPs and having stuff more directly come to Planning Commission as a final site plan. You are always going to be in charge of final site plans. You will remain that. So the procedures that all the bodies operate under now will continue.
Okay. And then not for comment on this particular, but one of the things I want you to kind of pencil in for a future meeting is a discussion or an update on what then comes up for the next master plan amendment revisions.
Oh, we are way ahead of you. I've already...
Well, I am saying that tonight, but this... what this means is that we can then start thinking about what goes on.
The game plan, what I can tell you right now is while we've already begun, we've been doing preliminary backdoor, you know, in-house discussions for a couple months now, in earnest, we are hoping to begin our public-facing engagement process and everything this fall, and we would love to really... Our game plan is to potentially have a joint work session, obviously, in the winter to make sure... We're fully updating the Cura study. We're looking for grant money now to complete the market study, because this will carry us up to 2040. We've already met with our equity officer about beginning our equity engagement strategy upfront to start with, more so than some other things. We have gotten licenses for our GIS urban, so we're trying to build out that platform, so we'll have a better graphic component for public engagement and everything else. And much like the other master plans, we've really... Once we feel comfortable in certain things, we want to come before Planning Commission and Council present all these background findings, everything else, and make sure we're all on the same page on the direction to take these elements going forward. Our goal is to do transportation and land use concurrently.
So you're not taking much of a breath there. You're going to go right into the next...
Retirement's coming.
I just heard it's going to be here till 2040. That's what I heard.
That's out to 2040. Not me personally carrying 2040.
Quick question, just for the public. Those projects that are in the pipeline, as of August, the new regs go into effect, what happens to those things in the pipeline?
So as we wrote in here, you know, basically, people have up until the effective date to submit under the current zoning ordinance, and at that point, if should they do that, they have two years to get to a regulatory action. And people that we've talked to that have sort of been hemming and hawing, most are waiting now. Not that they won't begin discussions with us, but they'll wait till after the effective date and come in under retool. So we don't really have many projects. Greg, obviously, on the community plan side, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're going to have a lot that even are in process now that would overlap. I think everything will be decided before the effective date.
Great. Excellent. All right. Any other questions? What's the recommendation from the staff?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based upon the evidence and the record, recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM 9739-2024 to the Mayor and City Council.
Anybody have any reservations with that?
No. I would say it again, said it a thousand times. It's really important that government does this. Zoning is one of the most... one of the hardest parts of small government, you know, enforcement. The police powers that run it are questionable at best, and land rights run right up against neighbor rights, and it's just... it's brutal. And having it as clear and, you know, sort of multi-input, you know, imagery, diagrams, and text, and charts, is critical to getting at least past that elevator pitch and getting into the meat of whatever the subject is we're dealing with. So this is a much bigger issue than it sounds like, and I know you're blood, sweat, and tears. And, you know, this is one of the few examples where we came up with the right consultants, so it's great. It actually worked out great, so thank you. And I'm just... I'm proud of our little city. It's really great.
I'd like to chime in and first of all, thank the Planning Commission, but as I mentioned, I have tremendous appreciation for City Manager Janita Bryley and City Manager's Office and the Mayor and City Council. This is something staff has been wanting to do for eons, and there's never been the political will. So we really appreciate that the stars aligned, that between CMO, Council, and the Planning Commission, everybody was on board with this. As we mentioned, you folks sat through a number of work sessions, saw many slides time and again, but it was worthwhile. People like Commissioner Hopkins, not only offering that, but serving on focus groups, backdoor helping us when staff had questions about things. While staff and the consultant can take a lot of the credit, again, it's all the people that participated in the engagement efforts, and it's these three bodies, again, that you gave clear guidance, you helped us out through the entire process, and you made this a better project.
Huge chunk of the city touched this some way or...
Yeah. It was a tough one to solve, because getting this in front of a lot of people so that it was understandable and seemed relevant, I mean, we know it's relevant, but to make that apparent to everybody else and understand the benefit of working through all these questions. You guys did a phenomenal job doing that. I mean, that's really remarkable in a way, because it could have looked like munich code, right? And it didn't, and it doesn't, and that's going to make a little difference.
It did. Now it won't. And it'll never be perfect, right? So playing, you know, these kind of playing in codes are brutal, and we don't know what we don't know yet. And things change, the world changes, so it's... this is as close as we're going to go.
In all seriousness, because this is a major step to move forward with our recommendations, are there any issues or questions or anything you want on the record as it moves forward for follow-up or concern, anything at all?
No.
Okay.
I think just keeping that summary sheet, I think, is going to be more valuable than any other component of this, you know, individual component of the plan. So that summary sheet's really going to be something we want to promote somehow to get people to start to read. So just help people get past that first, you know, pitch, so that they can help get into the meat of things. We can actually talk about substantive issues. It's really... it's great.
All right. Anything else? All right. Staff has recommended that we recommend approval to the Mayor and Council.
Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based upon the evidence and the record, recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM 9739-2024 to the Mayor and City Council.
Second? It's a move of the Senate in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. And also, again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to our site plan agenda. We have one tonight for AFP-9854-2024, update the sign package for Kentland's Place Shopping Center at 6282 Market Street in the MXD, which she developed its own amendment to the final site plan. I'm presenting from staff with Sam Copeland. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening. Staff is before you this evening to introduce amendment to final plan AFP-9854-2024, which is a minor waiver to amend the existing sign package for the Kentland's Place Shopping Center. This shopping center is located at 60 through 82 Market Street in the zone MXD. And as you can see here on the screen, the subject property is outlined in red. This application comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with Section 24-213A, which allows the Planning Commission to grant a minor waiver for the signed package update. Here to present the application is Brian Downing from Saul Centers.
Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Downing, Saul Centers. It's been some number of years since I've been here, pre-COVID, I'm sure.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you. And a lot of pre-COVID phases here as well, I see. So it's great to see the team. This is for us a cleanup item, and in a sense, because as things evolve, we're finding that our sign criteria and a lot of our projects are out of date. They were probably formulated in the late 90s, early 2000s, around the time this plan was put together. And so we find that they're inflexible, too prescriptive. They don't... they haven't adapted to the times. I'm doing this tonight, in part, because I was involved with the initial site plan amendment here, site plan, rather. And it's interesting that we got together, and we were trying to figure out how did we end up with this particular plan. It looks a lot like some of our prescriptive plans and our own criteria, but it's not exactly that way. We think primarily it was done in order to accommodate certain, probably the office signs in part, and to accommodate some of the peculiarities of this building. In any event, how would we switch this? Okay.
We're working this backwards.
Forward. What did I just do? There we go. Okay, thank you. One quick tutorial there. Okay, Kentland's Place, it's a 41,000-square-foot, two-level building. It's basically one and a half levels. Bottom level is retail, upper level is office suites. It was approved in '04, opened in '05. It's part of the larger shopping center and complex we have on that side of Kentland's Boulevard totaling 407,000 square feet. The sign plan applies only to that one. Picture of the existing elevation taken yesterday. I took it from this perspective because if you're out in the parking lot looking straight on, there are enough trees that you really don't get a feel for. So I thought this was the best view. Staff here has incorporated... has helped me incorporate a couple of their images from their staff report. In this particular instance, what these images illustrate is a... if you look in the top photograph, there is an empty sign panel that's obscured by the tree. If you're looking at it, it's directly head-on. There is a staff condition recommending that we clear up some old approval and incorporate in this plan the ability to put a sign panel there for an office tenant. And so we don't have... Saul doesn't have any objection to that, but that's the purpose of these photos here and the box in the drawing that's outlined in red there is the ability to add that to our sign plan. Right now, it isn't in the plan that I submitted, but it's a cleanup item because it turns out there is an old approval that needs to be... ought to be wrapped into this. Okay, going the wrong way again. Okay. I guess a little history on this, signs in 2005, our experience, and I think it explains the criteria then and where we are now and what we see now. Compared with 2024, materials, design tools, fabrication techniques, they were rudimentary 20 years ago for signs. You had two basic types, boxed in individual letters. The materials was basically metal boxes or channels, plexiglass faces, neon tube lighting. And neon tube lighting actually, compared to LED lighting, rather, makes sign fabrication a lot more inflexible. It also makes the signs a lot clunkier, if I can use that expression. You saw a lot of eternal metal box raceways. I mentioned about how neon signs, neon lighting constrain the ability to shape individual letters. This is another thing we're finding. Logos and branding were much more... much less common in 2005. You know, Starbucks had a little... had their Little Mermaid. Other... The market was starting to move that way, but now everybody's got a logo. Local tenants have logos, and their logos are incorporated into their sign. And you don't sometimes just see letters on a sign, you see a much larger logo. We have one right there right now, F45, which is a fitness center. F45 is probably... those three letters numbers are probably four feet wide, but the whole sign with their entire logo is much larger than that. Anyway, you couldn't do that 20 years ago because the technology wasn't there yet. It's there now. So we're finding in our own experience that we're having trouble shoe-horning when we have prescriptive criteria such as this. We're having trouble shoe-horning it in. The existing criteria, for example, on the ground level talks about you can get two lines of copy. The biggest one, subject to staff approval, the biggest one can be 18 inches. The next one can be no more than, I think, 12. It really doesn't account for lowercase, uppercase. It doesn't account for any kind of logo. It doesn't account for any kind of embellishment or anything like that. So what we've done instead is propose an update that would align the sign plan with the city's sign ordinance. Sign area would be limited 10% of the sod, and this single flexible criteria applied to this building ensures reasonably sized and effective storefront signs. The building's architectural sign band has a way of controlling storefront sign size and location. We found that, as I said before, the prescriptive criteria for maximum letter height, sign area, and sign length, the way they're phrased in the existing sign plan, just... they just don't really work anymore. Here are a couple of examples, a couple photographs again. You can see the sign band here. It's somewhat shaped by the awnings. It's shaped by the window sills above. It's shaped by this precast sign band in the foreground here. Some examples, top left, of two tenants sent hound and my eye doctor. If you look in here, you'll see that there's actually brick that's used to create some sign fields. This sign right here for Bonefish is probably the largest sign that we have right there. That's a 30-inch sign, and it's on an anchor feature at the far end, and it's not at all out of proportion with the rest of the center. Bonefish actually had to get a special approval in order to put up that 30-inch sign because it did not comply with the criteria. Going to the second level, much the same thing. We have six potential for seven sign locations across the top, and there's discussion about can it be one line or two? What size can the letter... What size can the letters be? It doesn't account for the fact that you might have logos, you might have embellishments, things like that, just that are appearing more and more in tenant signs. In fact, the example that I showed previously, if I go back up to this, let me see if I can find it here. Schreier Physical Therapy, you know, what is that, right there in the middle? It's a, it's an H, but it's got a logo around it, and it's, you know, does that comply with the criteria or not? I'm not really sure. But what I've done here, what we proposed to do is eliminate those kinds of criteria and say yes to the upper level office signs, so long as you have a sign that fits within this box, and so long as the letters are raised, so long as they're externally illuminated, so long as there's consistency of color. So there is a fair amount of uniformity along the upper level, you're fine. So I think that's, that's what we're attempting to do with the sign criteria. Now, the amendment has to satisfy the requirements of subsection 24-213A for a minor waiver. So I should go through this. I believe we're allowed by other provisions, excuse me for a second, other provisions of this article, the approving body may grant a minor waiver to approve a sign that deviates from requirements upon defining that. Such deviation will not have a proposed, will not have an adverse impact, et cetera. And in this case, the proposed amendment brings the CSP conference of sign plan into closer alignment with the city's sign ordinance provisions for allowable height, letter height, sign area illumination. As such, the proposed amendment will not have any adverse impact on health, safety, and general welfare. Second criteria is that the deviation will not be a hazard to traffic vehicles or pedestrians. The amendment will not create conditions that potentially allow for signage that distracts traffic, vehicles, or pedestrians. Rather, it will allow Kentland's Place and its tenants to continue to implement signage that clearly and concisely communicates with respective customers, employees, and employees. Such deviation needs to be necessary due to location, obstruction, or other factors that adversely impact the visibility of a sign. And this is, this is, I, I talk here about the points I made earlier. The CSP was approved in 2005. Since then, signage and graphics design has changed significantly, particularly due advances in imagery, technology, materials engineering. Amendment will update the CSP and enhance the flexibility needed to implement more visible and effective signage that incorporates current technology and standards. And then finally, the deviation is in conformance with purposes of this article. As previously noted, the proposed amendment brings the CSP into closer alignment with the city's sign ordinance, as such, it conforms with the purposes of this article. So with that, I close my presentation, and if you have any questions, thank you.
There's a little bouncing back and forth. Can you go back and just?
Sure.
Very quickly, what is the amendment you're asking?
The amendment is to, and I guess I could possibly pull out the staff report, but the essence of it is, on the ground level, signs right now need to be maximum of...
Is there an exhibit? I mean, because this will change the comprehensive sign package. So what is the proposed change in terms of the actual criteria?
I'm going to pull out the, are you looking for the report? Yeah, so what I can do first is I can pull up the staff report. So one thing that I was able to do was with the existing sign package, I went through and found every instance of a change and put it in a table. Let's see if we can get to this chart. There were, there were multiple changes. Most of them, though, were really trying to simplify it. For example, here, you can see here that for lower-level tenants, they had a maximum number of lines of text, so it was two. And really, they're just trying to remove it so that way it's all focused on the area. So with our new code update with retool, individual signage can be up to 10% of the tenant's space frontage. So they're just trying to better align their tenant requirements with what's currently proposed in the code.
Okay. So I'm going to give another, another version of the history. One of the reasons we do these comprehensive sign packages is to have some consistency or some, some, take, take a building or take a center like this that was a piece of design in and of itself, and then do a sign package that, that ensures that there's some compatibility between the tenants, that it's not a free-for-all. So like, for example, you may have an area that's, whatever the number is, 50 square feet or something, and you have five lines of text because that, you want to say that, you want to say your name, and you want to say your tagline, next to a nationally branded name that has a well-refined logo and, you know, so there's incompatibility with that in terms of the overall harmony of the facade. That's why that was done. It may be wrong, or maybe different today than it was then, but it was so there wasn't a free-for-all for graphics and for signage across a relatively compact facade, right? And that, that's what we cared about, they cared about at the time. And I don't know if that's right or wrong today, but just, just to be clear, it was, it's not meant to be, it's meant to look at the whole, not just each individual one, because in the sign ordinance, it, it contemplates individual buildings as a, as an entity with a sign on it. So this idea of a, of a strip center that has some kind of design continuity for the facade itself and some sense of composition for the whole thing, that needs to be reflected in the signage, and so that's why, that's why that package is there. So I'm getting at is, we may have waived some things along the way, like nationally branded signs come in that are slightly different, so we say, well, but it still is in the spirit of keeping things simple and straightforward and consistent. On the other hand, if we open this all the way up, then what we're talking about is almost anything goes within this panel. Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
You want to take that one, or should I take that one? Well, I can, I can take part of that, which is that the, and we didn't talk about this, but box signs weren't permitted. And the idea of the five lines of copy, you could accomplish that perhaps in a box sign back in 2005, but you couldn't accomplish it with an individual letters, and they weren't permitted. So that was covered there. Box signs here are still permitted, but only as ancillary signage, and then there are some limitations on it. Now, we didn't touch on that, and I apologize for not having gone through all the, the changes.
I understand. I guess my point is, do you, does everybody, I mean, I guess this is more of a discussion item, but just to kind of clearly state, the point is continuity. The point is some kind of consistency so that it doesn't look like a free-for-all on what otherwise is a fairly well-composed building. I mean, that's the kind of the motivation behind all this.
Okay.
And I don't see in the proposed amendment something that preserves that, but in a different way. I just see kind of like a muddying of anything. That's sort of my question.
Yeah, I think I heard, I think I heard in the testimony from the applicant that respect for the architecture, that you're architecturalizing certain parts of the facade with signage is really the goal, and still a, you know, design standard, but what we're, I think, probably trying to say is, where is that in this ordinance? That we're going to protect the architecture, that you know, something doesn't break your sign band, something doesn't, you know, violate the sort of consistency with the tenant next to it, which doesn't destroy the aesthetics of your building.
I guess, oh, for one, the sign has to be, and I think it's understood in this, the sign has to be over the tenant's space. So perhaps that's one, one that covers that. Each sign has to be on its, that tenant's facade, so it's, it's confined to that. I think that the architecture does by, by its nature in the, by the proportions and by the, the framing of the awnings and the size of the sign band does by itself constrain signs because it limits the field that you can put the sign on. It has that.
As you, as a rational applicant, will detect that, but this is an ordinance that, you know, if you sell this property tomorrow, the ordinance goes with it. And is, is someone who is going to recognize that that's a sign band?
Would it be? I'm trying, I'm trying to think what would be, what would solve it in this sense, because we haven't had this, I will say, we haven't had this kind of, we haven't experienced this kind of thing you're, you're concerned about.
Let's back into it. Are you going to solve a problem you have now with a tenant or with a potential tenant?
We're going to solve problems with this, any tenant we have coming down the line because every single one has to go through, every sign we're getting right now, it seems to me, when you look at it, doesn't really necessarily seem to fit with the criteria for one reason or the other. So the idea is to clean this up so that going forward, clean it up, whatever, bring it up to date, I should, would be a better way, so that going forward, we don't have that issue. We could, I suppose we could, you could, another approach would be to just ask to remove the sign band and, and the, the, the plan and go with the ordinance. Because the ordinance actually, I think, is, is, is more flexible than this in many, in some respects. I think it is. But what we're trying to do, I think, is to preserve the idea of where signs can be and can't be. The ordinance would allow signs on the, I think, on the back of the building and facing the lowest parking lot. We don't want that. It's not clear to me that the ordinance coming in would allow all of the office signs in the way they're approved in this one here. We want to be able to do that, to lease, continue to lease up the office, those sorts of things. So that's why we chose this. You know, is there, is there some, what, you know, would it be, all right, we're going to need to limit, limit the number of lines of copy, or we're going to need to limit the, no letter shall we know larger than such and such? I, I mean, I could come up with things, sure.
The reason I ask the question is the, because, as I said, the motivation before had to do with continuity and consistency and something that sort of worked with the building. And that isn't necessarily the goal or the actual outcome of following a sign ordinance by the letter for each individual business. That will result in a different look and feel for the building eventually. And I think it's wrong. It will be different, right? Because everybody will have much more latitude to do what they do with their signs. So I'm thinking the question on the floor is staff, kind of part of staff's analysis, if that's no longer the goal, do we have, is there anything else we need to constrain that the sign ordinance doesn't already do if you take them individually as just a sign by right, you know, whatever that?
Sure, and I can jump in for that part. So when I was looking at this with the applicant, so I actually pulled up here, this is exhibit number, this is exhibit number four, which is the existing sign package already. We were talking about what the sign allowed, and we found a lot of constraints, and one of them being, the one that I want to mention is, one, under lower-level tenants, and then unless otherwise approved by the city. So down here, it says, "Sign shall either be externally illuminated letters or reverse channel," which is internally illuminated halo letters. So that's it. They're pretty strict. So channel letters were not allowed. So one thing that the applicant's trying to do here is trying to update it because, you know, in 2005, it was different. He's also allowing for more of like, of what you can typically see with internally illuminated channel letters. So just trying to open it up for more flexibility for the tenant and also to help his sign contractors and tenants find signage that they can find elsewhere in the city.
I guess from looking at this, this is frankly one of the more, one of the weirder sets of sign guidelines that I've seen, you know? It's not overly graphic. It's basically a, a written-out version of a sign ordinance on, on the side of a, on the side of a drawing. I think one of the things that is not significantly changing are the limited drawings that are provided here, that establish the boundaries, that establish the alignments, that establish the sign panels and the proportions and all of that.
Yes, I hadn't understood that. So really, really the rest of the exhibit stays, right?
Yes.
It's all about what the signs can be made out of and how they can be made, all of the graphical constraints, basically just staying as is. So it's, it's editing some text to give some flexibility. It's not, you know, it's not throwing out the totality of the sign regulations.
I missed that. I mean, too, because that's where I was, I was not, I didn't track that in the presentation at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, so that would be great. I don't know, we're still in questions, but I guess, so, but that, but that explains a lot to me.
The net effect is the extents don't change, they're simply the technical aspects of whatever types of signs are being made and fabricated and installed. Is that right?
Correct. And another thing I'd like to point out as well is, you know, when I was looking through this, you know, as Commissioner Russell said, it, it is written out almost like a sign ordinance. When you get to this one part here, "The total area of sign shall not exceed two square feet for each linear foot of building facing the street." Not to mention, you're limited by sign height, and then the sign width can be no more than 80% of the facade. There's just a lot of technical aspects there for basically stating no more than, you know, X% of the building facade.
That's fair. And at the time, when I could tell where it came from, it was, it was all about somebody, or whatever it was, but there was a sense of what the proportion should be to some of the facade that was going on in and around Kentland's, and, you know, it was, it was a good guideline to follow. It was a way to quantify, but I think it was ultimately something like, yeah, it looks good, you know? And so that, it took some, it took some formulas to figure that out or to try, try to explain that to future folks.
But to be, but to be clear, right, we're still, does, the elevation exhibits with the boxes on them remain?
Yes. There's been no change in those.
But you're adding one new sign. You're going from five to six.
Well, yes, thank you. Yes, we're going to make that change. Thank you. Yes.
To me is the, the essence of it.
But it lives in a band, it lives in a, it lives in an architectural box that exists in the facade.
Yeah, those are actually...
It just didn't have a dashed line that said sign before, but now it does. So it blends in, it aligns, it's harmonious.
Perfectly acceptable. That's what I was trying to make, that's the simple word.
Inside of one, it's useless. It's got a tree in front of it. But the, and again, I'm probably beating it at work now, but all the calculations on the total coverage don't change?
Correct. I mean, really, when we were looking at the signage with the applicant, we wanted to try and align this closer to the sign ordinance that's being proposed with retool, but also recognize that this building has unique architecture on the second floor that really serves the upper-level tenants well. So it's trying to find a balance of what works well for the lower-level tenants, which is getting closer to our code, you know, allowing more types of letter signage and also the 10%, whereas up top for the office, we're trying to still keep the, the six areas where tenant signage could be found.
So go back down to the first floor. So does the net area available for signage go up or go down or stay the same? Business X, right?
Yeah.
If they look at the sign ordinance, or see the comprehensive sign package, they do a good calculation with all the different instances, they end up with a sign, right? It's contained in whatever that limitation is. We're going to keep that, or we're going to move on and use the sign ordinance as the calculation for it?
For the lower levels, we would be moving on to the 10%, which they have in the proposed sign ordinance, the proposed sign package.
10% of what?
10%, oh, good question. Let me pull that up. It's, yeah, I see what you're saying here. It's 10% of the facade. And what I'm doing now is I'm pulling up the proposed sign package, and I'll see if I can zoom in on it. If this computer loads.
It's stuck.
It's not responding. There we go. Okay, so moving on to building-mounted tenant storefront identification signs, three. Unless otherwise approved by the city, the total area of all permanent signage on each tenant facade shall not exceed 10% of the surface area of the tenant's facade. So we're trying to keep it in line with what's being proposed with the new code.
So centerline, demising wall, demising wall to the underside, to the ceiling or to the centerline of the...
It's how we currently calculate signage to the city. Right now, it's 5%. We are proposing an update 10% with retool, but the measurements are exactly the same how we measure any sign for any tenant.
But it's a two-story building.
But it's a, yeah, so, but it's a one-story, it's a one-story tenant. So we measure my as well to my as well, ceiling, the floor. Take that, 10%.
So, so let's, to, to, to do backwards math, if you go by the old area, the old calculation, two square foot per linear foot, if you're just looking at a ground floor tenant, under the 10% rule, that means you have a 20-foot floor-to-floor height. So assuming you're 15, currently, you actually have a higher percentage of your frontage than what you would have under a tenant, under a 10%.
Yeah. Yeah, I did some of that math, and I came to the same conclusion.
It's a bizarre metric calculation.
That was my question, is it going up or down? It sounds like it goes down.
It goes down slightly. It goes slightly down in some respects, right? Because it's 15 floor, 15 feet floor to floor.
So that would give you a foot and a half of signage in your foot of wall.
It may, it may go up slightly when you get to the one-story wing, depending upon how high the parapet is, but at 15 feet, it goes down. Yeah. Uh-huh.
So now we end up with a center of a lot of non-compared signs. I didn't go that. Okay. Okay. All right, so we're, staff would, would suggest this is netting out at about the same level of coverage, maybe the last, nothing, nothing major changes there. This cleans up the calculations, so it's a little less confusing to others trying to figure it out, and it opens up opportunities for other sign types to be on the building.
Correct. Yes.
With the addition of one new sign on the upper level.
Thank you.
Yes, correct.
Which are the goosenecks already there? There's just no sign?
Yeah, I believe so.
All right, so it's kind of missing anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in fact, we've got one of the, one of the slots on the front side. The goosenecks are there, but that tenant's vacated, so we haven't gotten another one up yet. Yeah.
All right, I think, I think I understand it now. Is there anyone here that would testify? You know what, I didn't, do you have the?
There is currently nobody online.
All right, good. At least let the record show that I asked, all right? Phil, thank you for cranking through that and doing the calculations while I was busy talking endlessly. Any other questions? All right, formally speaking then, discussion, any concerns with the proposal?
No.
No? All right. If not, what's the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP-9854-2024 sign package approval, finding it in compliance with section 24213A of the city code with one condition.
All right, any questions about the recommendations or motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendations, grant AFP-9854-2024 sign package approval, finding it in compliance with section 24-213A of the city code with the one condition.
Second. Moving to second, and all fair play, say aye. Aye, opposed. I pass the annulment. Thanks for the very circuitous analysis of this, but it looks like it all worked out. So good luck.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing continued sustained and successful business there. All right, that takes us to our, from the commission, Lloyd, may I start with you?
Just, everybody be careful of the heat out there and watch your pets.
Yep, so at the time of year again for the annual planner report, for the, part of the land use article, planning commission is required to approve it. This one's for the calendar year of 2023. As you know, we typically do an illustrative version of it as well. That is still to come. We just haven't completed that yet. And we'll present that to you once that's completed. But this is the regulatory required forms that we are looking for your approval tonight.
Quick question on section, we're down to C. It talks about development projects, this is for calendar year 23.
Calendar year 23, correct.
So the KC at 370, thanks all, the KC at 370 project and the Park and Brooks project, those, I didn't see them in there, but those had activity in 23, right?
I have to actually look, I don't remember the exact dates of them. I don't think Parsons Brook did it though.
I don't, I don't think they had commission activity in 2023. I'm sure staff was working on them, but I don't think they did.
Yeah, we, we pulled these reports through intergov, so they should be fairly accurate of the work that was actually done. But they should be accurate.
It feels like a long time ago.
It does, I guess, 22? All right, just had to ask.
We can look into it just to confirm.
If you've got, listen, the database is going to be way better remembered.
It was within the last 10 years and it's all come together in my head.
Something like that. Okay, good. Anything else you just, you can go forward.
I just need a motion to approve the form.
Their motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Moving to second, and all fair play, say aye. Aye, it is moving forward.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is some updates, some dates for you regarding meetings. We have the next planning committee meeting on July 3rd. And then there's a joint public hearing. This is for 915, 925 Progress Way. It's phase two for the Matten Project along Frederick Avenue. That is July 1st. And then there's a joint work session on July 8th. And that is the continuance of the topics discussed that Monday's joint public hearing for Lake Forest SDP.
Right, right.
You, you had a hint about the new digs?
The new council chambers will be, that meeting will be in July 8th at the new council chambers. And all of your subsequent meetings from there will be also in the new council chambers. We have one more meeting here.
I don't know why, but it is.
Great. Director Schulting, how are things?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight was a big night with your recommendation on retool. And I'd like to echo Rob's appreciation for your contributions to that effort. That was a yeoman's task for all of you and mayor and council as well. And we, we greatly appreciate it. And also, I wanted to express our appreciation for your robust participation on Monday night with the Lake Forest Joint Public Hearing.
Such a short meeting.
There were a few, there were a few observations made from the public that night. It was good, it was good. It was actually good to see that. It's been a long time since we've been here until 11 o'clock or whatever that was, yeah. Good to see the interest. All right, anything else? All right, if not, have a good evening and we're adjourned.